All right. Start with, um, okay. We're live and recording. Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Hello? Ms. Kiyabachi? Mr. Golson?
Here.
Ms. Karina Akis? Dr. Morris? Mr. Walker? Ms. Pittsburgh?
Here.
Mia Benaney?
Here.
Harrison Ernst?
Here.
Great, thank you. Uh, whoever, please join me for the multilege. Very long, the October 28th. Uh, first we've got a prior meeting to be met for works on September 30th. On October 7th, we have a regular public forum. On October 14th, we had our racial equity oversight meeting. And October 21st, we had a health policy and safety and policy meeting. Our upcoming meetings are also listed. On November 4th, we have our next regular public forum meeting. November 18th, racial equity oversight committee meeting session. December 2nd, our reorganization in public session. December 9th, audit community and regular public forum meeting. Uh, now we'll move on to our presentation. And first have our recital. And my love, the costume guys.
Do you remember you, I gotta bring it back. Last year I was a penguin. Um, this year I got someone on board today, so.
Yeah.
From down in Downriver, if anyone does. Because I got a lot of confused looks. People were just like a choice. Don't get me wrong, I look great, I know that, but, uh, it wasn't little. It is, it's an us thing. So anyways, our highlights, take it away.
Um, the Whist Water Polo boys and girls are going to state plans this weekend. And same with, uh, there's a big event for robotics. It's a grand prix, it's this weekend as well.
That's super exciting. Additionally, we have the Whist, Whist recital. Where students can come participate in like an open mic type night where me and I are both participating. Um, and then we're both are also excited for our senior banquet coming up. That's, uh, next Friday, next Tuesday, sorry, next Monday. Um, I'm a spirited fellow, I don't have a great time, so I'm excited for it to be our turn to. And then finally, uh, Whist Girls Tennis made it to the second round of states. I'm getting knocked out, but it's a great effort. Present, uh, skill from across. Thanks.
All right, um, now to our next presentation. Hispanic Heritage Month presentation.
Good evening, everyone. This is Kazia Latour, Director of Equity and Cultural Responsiveness. It is a pleasure to be here this evening. On my end, it's a little challenging to hear the board, so, um, just wanted to make that clear. Hopefully you can hear me clearly. Good. So, it is a pleasure, I'm very delighted to highlight each building's efforts in honoring National Hispanic Heritage Month. Although we are recognizing the history, culture, contributions and influence of Hispanic and Latin American Americans. At this time, um, throughout the school year and throughout the curriculum, we dive into making sure that we lift them up and celebrate them. So at this time, I'm going to share my presentation, so that you can see it. And I'm gonna start with our Blue Bell Elementary School, which has done such wonderful work in terms of the music class. So students in grades K through 2 learned the Mexican folk dance La Raspa. This dance originated in Veracruz, Mexico, and is often performed at celebrations. The dance involves simple steps, jumping, clapping, spinning, and dancing with a partner, which I know the students loved. And then students in grades 3 through 5 learned a popular folk dance called Los Machetes. And this is from the Jalisco region of Mexico. This dance tells the story of cutting down the sugarcane during the harvest. In the photo that we see with the hanging flags, our 3rd graders learned about Heritage Months. Specifically, why they are celebrated and the history of Hispanic Heritage Month. Including the history of the countries around the world that speak Spanish. They selected a flag and researched that specific chosen country. At Lower Gwinnett Elementary, our library continues to be a resource for learning about Hispanic Americans. In our classes that we focused on, um, the Hispanic Heritage Month, students really learned about Latin genres and cultures. So students had the opportunity to look at some of Mark Antony's songs, some of his music in terms of Viveer Mi Vida. And the students really enjoyed the infectious salsa rhythms and fun lyrics reminding them to laugh, dance, and live their lives. At Shady Grove Elementary, 1st graders researched different leaders in their Hispanic history journals. Each day, the students learned about a new leader, discussing what they had learned and why the people were important. They also made connections between the leader's lives and their own lives. Students in Mrs. Cologne's class are holding up the page of their favorite leader whom they learned about. In 2nd grade, we had our 2nd graders celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month by looking at Pablo Picasso's art study. Students learned about the artist and his style, creating their own work in Picasso's style. And then students in Ms. Living Good and Ms. Tidwell's class displayed their work outside of the halls of Shady Grove. 5th grader students also researched historical and influential figures of Hispanic heritage. They were able to focus on the figure's important life events, as well as their contributions. At Stony Creek Elementary, 2nd graders have been listening to and reading literature celebrating Hispanic heritage through different read alouds. 4th graders also researched influential Hispanic and Latina individuals. At the middle school, our library is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with a display that features fiction books written by Hispanic authors and nonfiction books that feature important figures in Hispanic history and culture. Students are welcome to check out these books and pick up a new bookmark that highlights Hispanic artists, athletes, musicians, scientists, leaders, and so many others who have made important contributions to our world. Students in Connectados, which is the Hispanic affinity group, also created paper bag cunhadas. Students in Spanish class studied famous Hispanic people and created projects highlighting their accomplishments. In 8th grade social study classes, students chose one Hispanic nation to explore and then created country reports which are on display for students. In this slide, we have our artists in 8th grade completing a printmaking unit inspired by Hispanic artists such as Pablo Picasso. Students drew inspiration from various prints created by these artists and designed their own printing block. Starting with a sketch in pencil, transferring their sketch to the linoleum block, carving their block, and then finally printing their artwork. The student prints highlighted various endangered species selected by the student and focused on designing a composition and the elements of art, line, and texture. At the high school, we have our Hispanic-Latin Association, which is featured here in many of the different, um, pictures. They had a fiesta on October 15th, and prior they worked very diligently on creating, uh, wonderful bracelets which they used to do fundraising. At the high school, what's so impactful as well as we've seen with our different, um, schools and what they've also celebrated and lifted up was how this looks in the classroom. And so in our AP Government and Current Issues classes, whether it was honors or the academic sections, we had students who identified and compared voting habits and domestic policy concerns for Hispanic and Latina voters. For current issues, students selected a current Hispanic and Latina US Member of Congress, the House or the Senate to research. In Women's Studies, in both honors and academic sections, students identified Hispanic and Latina suffragists involved in the suffrage movement and their methods of activism and accomplishments were also included in the unit study. In math, we had for Hispanic Heritage Month, the opportunity for students to focus on concerns of Hispanic men and women in personal finance. And so they studied, um, many different articles such as the Fresh Voices in Finance. And there they were able to learn more about Hispanic men and women that began new careers by blogging about personal finance for Hispanic men and women. In our Science Department, specifically in Chemistry, students really focused on and honored the contributions of Hispanic and Latina Americans in science and engineering by researching influential figures in these fields. Each student selected an individual to study, creating a slide that highlighted their achievements. Slides were then compiled into a collaborative class presentation showcasing the significant impact of Hispanic and Latina professionals on science and engineering advancements. In the Forensics and Environmental Science Class, students explored the contributions of Hispanic scientists and engineers through a blog post titled Get Inspired By These Hispanic Scientists and Engineers. And students selected a scientist who interested them the most and completed, uh, research on that person. Um, the biography helped them to lift up three interesting facts about their life. They explored career links related to the scientist, and then students reflected on which career intrigued them the most, discussing its pros and cons, and identified three high school classes that would be valuable if they pursued that career path. In our Environmental Science Class, students completed an activity that recognized the significant contributions of Hispanic and Latina leaders to environmental science and activism. It highlighted the works of figures like Berta Casereras, Mario Molina, Esperanza Martinez, who fought for environmental justice, indigenous rights, and global conservation efforts. And then in AP Environmental Science, students researched and investigated environmental issues and their impact on the Hispanic and Latina communities. The activity included a short video on individuals who have been advocates and leaders and major scientists in the environmental field from Hispanic and Latina communities. In our AP Physics 2 class, they really dived into learning a great deal about Mario Molina. A renowned Mexican scientist who played a pivotal role in understanding the harmful effects of chlorofluorocarbons, CFCs, on the ozone layer. As students learned about the thermodynamics and heat engines, Molina's groundbreaking research was highlighted, showcasing how his work not only earned him a Nobel Prize, but also led to a global agreement to ban CFCs. This served as an opportunity to honor the significant impact of Hispanic and Latina scientists on advancing our understanding of the world. And lastly, but not certainly least, in our Special Education Department at the high school, we focused on reading classes, um, through a Special Education Department. Students delved into the inspiring life of Roberto Clemente, enhancing their literacy skills by exploring his remarkable career and philanthropy. Students learned about Clemente's achievements as a legendary baseball player and his dedication to humanitarian efforts. His lasting legacy not only as a sports icon, but also a champion for social justice and community service, was something that really enriched the learning opportunities for all students. Thank you for this opportunity to share how we are honoring National Hispanic Heritage Month in Wisahickin School District. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Kazia. Wow, that was, um, a wonderful presentation and so many great activities that our students participated in this past month. Uh, so thank you so much for putting that together for us and sharing that and helping to organize all of that. Um, we really appreciate that. Any board members have any questions or comments? Well, again, thank you so much. I see good presentations and seeing what our students do in the classrooms, so thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, if I can interrupt, um, we're not hearing you very well on the Zoom. And I think both, uh, Jeff and Kazia are probably experiencing what I'm experiencing. So I don't know if your mic is too far away from you, but, um, it's not coming through very well.
I'm really close, I just don't want to hear any feedback. Sometimes it makes like a weird sound when it's too close. Okay, good. Can you hear me better now? That be?
A little bit better.
Okay. All right, one closer, so hopefully you can hear me better. Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to our first public comment period. Um, and, uh, the board does appreciate her. We allow maximum of five speakers to be heard on the same topic. Since when the comments did three minutes, as I've noted in the past, we do have a buzzer now. Um, I do like to be able to focus on comments and take notes, so, um, I don't like to watch the clock, so we do have the buzzer. Please don't be alarmed when we hear it. Uh, in the interest of fairness and in order to treat all speakers equally, it is the board's practice not to engage in dialogue with speakers when appropriate. We do follow responsive on board docs. Um, if you're in perfect, in person, excuse me, um, need to complete one of our forms and make sure that you handed that in. We do have a couple up here now, and you're virtual. Um, we'll go back and forth, so I'll ask Amanda when we get to, we'll do one in person and go one virtual. Okay, so we'll start with, uh, Bob Hill. Um, in your approach, please state your name, your municipality of residence, and the topic you're speaking on.
Cool, thank you. My name's Bob Hill, I'm from, uh, Whiteneet Township, Blue Bell. Uh, wanted to just quickly, uh, touch on the topic of the lack of search. Um, I guess the one thing I want to point out is the, all the Facebook posts that the board members, when they run their last election, were posting about doing this and increasing transparency and trust within the community. Uh, obviously what you have done now completely goes against all of that. So I think the school board has lost the trust of the community, and that's unfortunate for the coming superintendent that they, that that has happened. Um, the other thing I want to talk on was the board, uh, you know, going the extra effort to remove jewel from all of the policies. Uh, it's good to see that you're working small to big on our problems within the district, that all the problems that we're facing. Um, that's all I had, I don't need the full three minutes, just, uh, wanted to voice my displeasure with the actions that the board has taken. And also want to remind them that any contracts that the board enters into with Universal School families will violate any trans, any, uh, related party transactions and, uh, independent, uh, transactions as well.
Oh, thank you, Bob. No hands raised, okay. Sorry, there's people, Mark Kena?
Amen, Whiteneet Township, I'm a parent of two things. One, it is standard practice for a board to search for candidates and to seek public input in some form or another. This is after all perhaps the single most critical decision the board makes, and you do after all, because our agents. Two, no area school dis, school board has appointed a superintendent with less experience in the district than Dr. Dewan has here, or appointed without public input or a search, period. Being passed out right now is a fact sheet highlighting just some of the area school districts that this board has incorrectly cited as support for its own lazy and shameful inaction. The truth is, the boards that you have cited did search even when they hired internally. And even when the internal candidate had 25 and up to 33 years of experience in their own district. Three, board has rattled off meaningless buzzwords and hollow adulation and, excuse me, and cited Dr. Dewan's timely email responses and are doing things that frankly just fall within assistant superintendent's job responsibilities. But there are basic questions that we would expect to be part of any process. We don't know if the questions were ever asked, and we certainly don't know the answers. Among them, what concrete ideas for addressing ongoing concerns mitigating anticipated issues has your predetermined pick offered you? What can you say sets Dr. Dewan apart? What can the board cite in terms of real achievements, specific examples of hard decision-making that yielded positive outcomes and demonstrated your understanding of this, of the district's needs and embodied our shared, shared values and priorities? Now, the board suggested, uh, that it didn't want to search out of concern that Dr. Dewan would, would lose. Uh, we would lose her to another district. Respectfully, if Dr. Dewan wants to be here, she will endure any process that the board devises. And if she is the best qualified and most capable, she will prove it. Now, other districts make, uh, public their leaders' contracts. It comes as no surprise that this board will only make public an excerpt without any salary or benefits details. Uh, but which does note the five-year maximum term that you've, that you've given to her, so, you know, that's really just a slap in the face to all of us. The board secrecy is no doubt in effort to stifle any public comment or critique in advance of board meeting where you are set to vote on that very contract. This is shameful. I want to again remind you of your own policy, not like this board really cares about its own policies, but 903 does state that the meeting agenda and all pertinent documents shall be available at the meeting. So I ask you, where is it? Finally, boring October 7th, the October 7th meeting, and ever since I've thought over and over again about this. And I understand it's your policy not to engage in dialogue. But I've been thinking, if I were Dr. Dewan and I were listening to the frustration and dissatisfaction, wouldn't I want to speak out? And at least reassure those listening that I hear them, that I'm committed to this district. And whatever process the board puts me through, I want to prove myself that I do want to serve. That is what a leader would have done. That is what a position in this district would have done. Simply put, you all sold us short. You will not change your ways despite all the valid objections raised. Your secrecy, your inaction, your arrogance is nothing short of shameful. All of us in Wisahickin, lifelong residents, new families, new families and, and parents that came here full.
We're now moving on to our next speaker. Is there anyone online, Amanda?
There are no hand raised online. I wish I could give some of my time so that Mark could finish, but, um, I can't. I, um, came to speak about, um, the student self-assessment surveys, but I did want to piggyback off that. There is a lot of disappointment in the community, I hope that you all take that, not personally, but on the, um, on the level of knowing that you owed us more than what we got. Um, so back to what my comment is about, um, the student self-assessment surveys and the current opt-out passive consent system, uh, that is in place to determine their administration in our schools. Last year, parents and guardians of students across the district experienced their right to parental consent being taken away from them when their children were administered the Belongness Psychological Self-Assessment Survey against their expressed wishes. These parents had properly followed the procedure in place to opt their children out. And they were even given confirmation that their children would be excused. Later, they came to find out through their own children that they had not been excused and that they had subjected, been subjected to taking the assessments. The evidence points to a poor unintentional execution of the opt-out system. Many parents spoke out about this, and I myself sent an email to the entire board and board explaining the issue. It is critical that the district abide by the law, federal law in place related to opt-outs. The protection of people rights amended which governs the administration of students of a survey, analysis, or evaluation, and on an ethical level in particular when the district is treading into the domains of mental and emotional health, which is what the Belongingness Self-Assessment effectively does. This assessment seeks to uncover the thoughts and feelings of students outside of a traditional mental health setting. Setting foot, sitting feet away from their peers in any direction during their school day. The novelty of this new practice should not escape us, nor should the need to fully ensure that no child is administered this assessment without the permission of their parents or guardians. The opt-out passive consent system in place, it's failed on more than one occasion. And I ask the board to consider a simple solution. It's one that would avoid all of these issues completely, would restore trust, and protect the district from the liability that comes from breaking federal law. Create a policy that would implement an opt-in active consent system for any help surveys administered to our, to the students and to our children. Otherwise, we're at continued risk violations of the PPRA. And that's not good. Thanks.
Hey, online?
There are no hand raised.
To our next person. Bobby?
Amber Barrow. Um, first, thank you all for all that you do. And Dr. Dewan, I, I want to speak directly to you, and I want to assure you that none of this is about you personally. Um, it's gotta be hard not to take it personally, but this is truly and strictly about the process. Um, to conduct this entire process in such an unprecedented way without any public discussion, let alone input, it, it just feels wrong and it's really hard to swallow, as you can see. I very much want to get behind this, to support Dr. Dewan. Um, I feel like today the superintendent's afterthought comment at the end of an email about voting and the importance of democracy, um, it wasn't the best place to say. Oh, and by the way, Dr. Dewan's the best person I've ever seen on the job. Well, then can we get her in here right now and see what she can do? Um, cause I, I really cannot wait to meet her. You're asking us to blindly trust you, and it's really hard for us to do right now. Um, I don't know what her stance is on things. You do, you've spent nine months talking to her, but we have got nothing. Um, we don't know what her stance is, how she plans to lead us forward, and we want to. Is she on board? Does she agree with our current superintendent? Um, does she support how he's led us today? Is she happy with where we are? Um, we don't want more of the same, and I think that that is something that scares us a lot. Um, so I ask that the board provide the community some valid reasons as to why we went so outside the box and bypassed a normal search process. Um, I want to know what is so fantastic and what our five-year plan is. I want to understand why the Office of Curriculum and Technology, where we've got two of the biggest issues warrants a promotion. We've got a mess at the middle school that you're blindly supporting for, I don't even know what reason, but that's for the second public comment. And then we've got Freckle also over there as a technology program. It's a disaster. And you're blindly saying none of these things are problems, and they clearly are. Um, that leaves us not understanding this decision without a public search. So I would ask that the board get back to us in a Q and A and promote ourselves on Dr. Dewan. I'm sure she's wonderful. I, I want to get behind it, and I want to throw all of my support against, you know, with her. Um, but I, I, I need your help to do so, because you know her and, and, and we don't. So, thank you.
There are no hands raised.
Hello, everyone, uh, my name is Dawai, but you can call me David. Um, yeah, um, I, I'm not really prepared. Um, I just want to come over here and to learn. Um, just, you know, before I address any of the concerns, I'd like to share a little bit of story about me. Um, I'm, I'm first generation from China, so, um, you know, I, I came to the United States because it's democracy, it's, uh, you know, because of freedom of speech. So I, you know, that, that's how I landed to this country and, you know, which I like it. And, um, right before I come to this, uh, I mean, actually I'm from Ambler, sorry, I forgot to mention about that. And, uh, I actually moved to this area last year and, um, only because of the, you know, better, um, better community and better school district. And, uh, but after I landed to, uh, to this Wisahickin School District, and I saw the rate, uh, rating is actually dropped down a couple of points. So I, I didn't get any, you know, notification or, you know, explanation at the time. I didn't know anyone, so I just want to, you know, learn and learn some information by connecting to. So I just want to, you know, learn and learn some information by connecting to to maybe the board of the the school district and seeing some of the parents here. I just want to learn, right? And I, what I want to say is, you know, we just shared how wonderful Hispanic history, right? So every culture has their own unique character, right? And the United States has, you know, even it's not too long the history, but still, you know, there's a lot of things that track, you know, you guys embrace so many different cultures. And and also, you know, this is a place that's democracy, which is what we're looking for, right? So I hope that you don't get reminded by a foreigner what democracy is. And I don't feel there's a transparency of the election, you know, I don't get any of this. I don't see, you know, any public information. So that's something that I want to learn. And I hope there's a transparency in the process for the election. And, you know, I'm here to, you know, to have a better education and I want my kids to have a, you know, same and a better education. So I hope this is actually from the, you know, higher level when it's moving forward. If we have a very, very good system and we're showing our kids the best history of the nation, right? So this is how we teach our kids. So, yeah, that's it. I mean, I just hope that, you know, as what I'm learning from the all those concerns, I'm actually concerned about this school district. So that's, that's why I want to learn a little bit more. And I just want to address my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, David. There are no hands raised online. Hi, Jen Rappaport, the Long Island Township. I'll be quick. The community has this trust you to be sure our district is run with transparency. Not involving the stakeholders, not conducting interviews and simply appointing a new superintendent does not go very well with the community. Again, Dr. Dewan, this is nothing personal. This is simply about the process which has happened. This is a position that requires a process. Dr. Dewan should 100% be a part of that process along with any other candidates that wish to apply. Dr. Chrisfield, you could send an email earlier. Its words can be used in this situation as well. This is an invaluable opportunity for you to role model what it's like to take part in a democracy. It can be talked about in class or around the dinner table. But this is something we can do and our students are not only listening, but also learning class every day.
No one else? There are no hands raised online. I don't want her first to comment here is that. Right, and then to the president of the board. And upon my report this evening, seven point one, which is the resolution. It's W 1224 Election of District Superintendent in accordance with 24PS Section 10-1071, 10-1073, 10-1075. And motion to enter into contract to establish salary and fringe benefits for the position of district superintendent. So this is the contact with Dr. Dewan for superintendent. And for the contract, it would run from July 1st of 2025 until June 30th of 2030. We're still finalizing the terms of that contract and we discussed it earlier in the executive session. I do have Jeff who's going to talk with us briefly this evening. Jeff, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're a little bit louder than where you were, but it's still low. But I did hear, I did hear your comments.
Okay, so I wanted you to just address briefly this evening as we discussed. It's a little bit more about the process, which you superintendent as well as choosing from within. Can you just discuss that with us this evening?
Sure. In 2012, the Pennsylvania Legislature extensively revised the school code to govern both the process of electing a superintendent and negotiating their contract. In large part, many of the provisions in a superintendent's contract are dictated by state law. And all those sections that you just read to the public are part of the statutory construct in Pennsylvania on how the process is done. The Pennsylvania law does not require school boards perform searches. And indeed, many school districts in the region have not performed searches. And I know a lot of districts have been named and I represent a lot of districts in the region. And some districts employ search firms successfully. And some districts have used search firms with actually horrific results. Where they have recommended candidates that have serious difficulties in their history. Neighboring Springfield, Montgomery did a search a number of years ago, yielded a superintendent that was not very successful in the community. And the board subsequently resorted to a direct method, a non-broad-based search to select their superintendent, who became well-loved in the community and was there in the community for some time. And her successor was promoted from within and is still sitting as superintendent. I can point out that in a number of school districts in the region, they have utilized high-priced search firms and were not happy with the results resulting from that. And there is this implicit presumption that if a search was performed, that there would be extensive community involvement. And in large part, in the search process, there isn't a lot of community involvement. At best, it usually is in determining a profile of a superintendent that the community would like to see, which is pretty uniform amongst the school districts in the Commonwealth and the region. I want to also point out that as part of the process, we are required to meet with the superintendent candidate and incorporate into the contract objective performance standards. And this is state law that need to be incorporated into the contract. And Dr. Dewan and the board have been talking about those objective performance standards. And the board and Dr. Dewan are the two parties that are required to address that under the school code. It's not a community-based decision. It is an employer-employee-based decision. And they will be incorporated into the final contract draft once we complete the negotiations of that contract. Secondly, the contracts themselves usually incorporate existing benefit structures and are paralleled after the contracts that are in place for other central administrators. In this case, the contract is being negotiated based upon, in large part, Dr. Chrisfield's contract. And I will say that there is no uniformity, I can tell you, amongst school districts in the search process. It is usually a site-based decision. Some districts have decided to promote from within if they have an excellent candidate within. And some districts have decided to go to the open market to find people. And I know for a fact, right now, another district I represent has elected to go through the search process. And the search process thus far, after multiple rounds of interviews, has not yielded a candidate that a majority of the board is comfortable with. So there is a wide variety of methods to address this issue. And I just want to make it clear that assuming that this board were to have gone the official search process using a search firm or an intermediate unit to engage in the search process, there is no assurance as to the extent to which the community participates in the process. And that's important because I advise a lot of school districts and my area specialty is employment law. And I do not like to put individuals in an interview process who are not trained as to the appropriate questions that you can ask in an interview process. And those issues were fully vetted in this instance. But in large part, community members do not actively participate in the process, even in a district that yields a search. I know many districts that have gone through searches and present a recommended candidate to the community at a board meeting with the contract with no community input. So I know a lot of things have been said regarding the quote-unquote "process." But I will say in this particular instance, unlike searches, in a search process, a board gets the benefit of hearing a candidate at best to the extent of maybe an hour, an hour and 20 minutes of interview time. In this particular instance, the board has had the benefit of a three-year interview process. So in my experience, which spans many, many decades, this often is a more effective way to get a candidate who will work well with the district and the community in question. And I will say parenthetically, in the past, Wissahican has not uniformly used a search process to pick its superintendents. So with that in mind, I just wanted to clarify that we will get, the intention is to get the contract, the finalized objective performance standard required by state law, finalized by our meeting next week so that the board can elect the superintendent in accordance with the school code for a three-to-five-year term.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? So, I would have Jeff, is it typical for the names of any final candidates to typically be shared out by districts or is that information typically kept confidential?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Typical for a final candidate, if you're doing a search process, is it typical for it to be shared out? Or is that typically kept confidential?
That really is a case-by-case determination. That's a good question. In many instances, top candidates don't want to let their existing boards know that they are actually searching for a new position. And at times, the candidates make a specific request that they're confidential. In one of the searches and the one I referenced a few seconds ago in another county where a board did do a search, the candidates expressly made a request that their names not be released. And the board members were required to sign documents that as part of the process, that they would not release the names of candidates because of concerns about letting their employers know. Similarly, in another search in Montgomery County that was recently performed, a similar request was made because of the candidate's desire for confidentiality in the process.
Okay. The contract that we have to move to our next meeting. Assistant Superintendent Report. No information items or action items for this meeting. Thank you. Jeff, Board Solicitor Report.
Similarly, there are no action items other than obviously the contract that will be addressed through your president's report next week.
Great, thank you. Board Secretary Report, Tim.
Thank you. This month, we have six meeting minutes for approval. The work session, regular board meeting and four committee meetings, communication, racial equity oversight, health, safety and wellness, and the policy committee.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? All right, Board Treasurer Report.
Thank you. Under the treasurer's report, we have the September treasurer's report for approval.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions on that? All right, thank you, Tim.
Danielle, HR Report. Right, good evening. For your review tonight, there are seven items under Section 13 of the Human Resources Report. The first three action items include appointments, resignations and a retirement, leave of absence, extracurricular changes, volunteer additions and a salary degree change. Item four is for an assistant on special assignment agreement. And 13.6 is for an interim contracted HR services with the MCIU covering the transition before the HR manager started. And lastly, item seven is for a conference attendance. Second, just very important, thank you.
Great, thank you, Danielle. Any questions or comments regarding HR? All right, thank you.
Sorry, Danielle, I had just one quick question about the MCIU HR Administration Services Agreement. So that's like, I guess, a very short-term temporary assignment to provide some support for your team.
Yes, we had some transition, our HR manager transitioned out. So the MCIU offered some temp services to us. It's about a total of five days or so that they they came out. So, and I'm happy to report our HR manager, Kate Clemente, who's also on the agenda, is started today. So she had a little bit of overlap with the IU temp and we're good to go in HR for a while.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? All right, thank you again. Go to Communications Committee, Zapping.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Yep, so just one informational item, I guess maybe two. One is that our district annual report was sent out across our district. This goes out to not only families who are within our school system, but all, all members of our community who live here. So that is something that we do annually and Kristen Rollings and her team work on that to go out. We also had a communications committee meeting last week. And there we talked about some additional efforts that we're looking to investigate from a communication perspective for this coming year and next. Especially trying to find ways to connect with our local library and offer some avenues of opportunity for us to communicate and meet with our community members at the library. More to come as they get ironed out. There were some really good ideas and opportunities that I think we're going to be able to start off probably in December and January of this year. So stay tuned, more to come there. No more, no more items to report.
Great, thanks so much, Zappy. Questions or comments?
Just a comment about the annual report. If you guys take a close look at the very last page of that report, it features our very own Harrison Ernst. He steps away, but he is also in costume on that last page. So, but it's a great report overall and I appreciate how it goes out, not to just parents in the district, but also to all residents, because all residents obviously pay property taxes to support the school system. And it's our opportunity to provide more information about what's happening in our schools and provide some facts, figures, data about how tax dollars are being invested in keeping this district strong and successful in the coming years. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. And I did mean to mention Harrison. Harrison is going to be our man in costume. So it was fun to see him on the back cover of the annual report. So thanks, Joe, for that, for that additional information. So thanks, Joe, for that, for that uh additional information. Appreciate it.
Thank you again. I'll on to curriculum and technology. Um, yeah, or Dr. Dwan, Dr. Dwan, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this evening, we have five items that we will be reviewing um for which we'll seek approval at next month's, excuse me, next Monday's meeting. Uh, the first is our first quarterly invoice uh to the MCIU for the Age of the Beginner Services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, that will come up again throughout the year because there are four invoices the board will see. The second is for payment to the MCIU for the Age of Beginner Beginner Summer Services for the summer of twenty twenty-four. And I'll just pause to remind the board that the Age of Beginners Program is for uh students who are in the Early Intervention Program with the MCIU. And it's the students for whom uh their parents have decided to retain them and remain in the EI program for an additional year, um which is their right to do. And so that's what the Age of Beginner Services costs cover. The third is um outplaced educational services intuition costs for four students indicated in the chart. The fourth item is approval of payment to the MCIU for shared services. Um, as you may recall, we seek for approval of the projected shared service plan prior to the start of the school year. However, during the year, once the year is underway, there are sometimes additional services added due to student additional needs, um which results in revision to the MCIU shared services cost. So the cost in here is in addition to the cost that was approved by the board. Um, I believe it was in June twenty twenty-four. And then the last item is approval of the three hundred and fifty-one students who met the requirements to receive the legitimate high school diploma for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This is a routine item that comes to the board at this time of year. That concludes our report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dwan. And I know they sometimes ask for this information when it comes up every year, but um the different um academies, the foundations, New Hope Academy, the XI. They provide something more information to the board than report like what these different um academies, what kind of services they specifically provide that we can't provide here. I know they provide a specialized type of.
Yes, they do. The the environment and the services that students are accessing um are are to me, they're individualized and then outside of the realm of what the district is able to offer. I'd absolutely be happy to follow.
Thank you so much, absolutely. Uh, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much for that report. Uh, Facilities and Transportation, Joe?
Thank you. Uh, no informational items this evening. Do have three action items for consideration and for vote next week. And I'm going to ask Tim if maybe he could give us a quick summary of these. Tim?
Sure. The first item is the disposal of obsolete items, which is a routine process. Uh, the next one is the purchase of a new cloud truck, the current cloud truck. Uh, these are replaced due to the fact of not being a fast inspection. And we'll need that as we head into the winter months. And then finally, we have the design proposal for a sound that the mills address the HVAC issues.
Thanks, Tim. Questions?
Point, uh, Tim, it's just to design. All right, this isn't the one call. This is just.
I wish we could.
I know, right? Okay.
Yes, it's just a design. It does incorporate using a uh using an engineer to ensure that the design is correct.
Okay, the goal is to redirect the sound towards.
I don't know where it's going, but it's going to go.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Question?
Yeah, just to clarify. So once the design of uh sound dampening uh is done, then whatever that design is, we go out to bid for someone to, I guess, construct it. And so during a separate action, I.
That's correct. You have to get the bid filled, design, and create a bid package. The bid package will be advertised out, sent out, and then we'll.
Okay, thanks.
Great, any other questions? All right, thank you. The report? Uh, my report?
Yeah, there'll be uh uh three items next week. Uh, first two are regular items, moving financial records and list of payments. Um, the third item is around uh issuance of bonds, up to twelve million dollars. Um, that's part of our normal budget process that occurred uh last June. Uh, that approval. And Tim, do you mind um? What what's our current bond rating with the rating agencies? Our rating, AC rating is triple A. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that report. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you so much. Uh, we'll move on into the Policy Committee Report. Marshall?
Thank you, Amy. Um, we have uh one informational item this evening. We had a policy committee meeting back on October twenty-first, at which point we went over fourteen policies that were up for review or amended. Those policies, some of which overlapped depending on different um areas of the policy booklet, um were a little bit redundant depending on who they applied to. But in essence, uh, what we did was we reviewed policies relative to student discipline, uh weapons offenses, tobacco and vaping product use, controlled substances, um and uh uh use of facilities, uh public records requests, emergency preparedness and response, relations with law enforcement agencies, school security personnel, uh child abuse reporting, opening exercises, and public attendance at school events. We went through the um uh potential changes uh in those that were recommended. Uh, a lot of it was language-based. Um, and so next week, we will seek be seeking approval of action items eighteen point two through eighteen point fifteen, um which is the approval of the first reading of these policies. As everybody knows, we go through several of them. Steve has already brought up a couple of questions or issues regarding some of the language uh that may be incorporated uh as addendums to that. Um, and so we will uh seek approval next week of the first reading, and then we will go through the second reading before the final. With that, uh, that's the end of the meeting.
Great, thank you so much. Any comments or questions?
Hey, Amy, um, it's Zeffy. I I have a question. Um, it looks like in um the tobacco and vaping, um both those policies, vaping was actually struck from a a lot of the language. And um, and I think, I I don't know, I I did a quick search in our policies and I don't see a separate um policy for vaping. But I I do feel like we probably need to think about um what kind of language we want to incorporate into vaping because tobacco is not the only product that is consumed. I don't know what the right word is, um via vaping. So I don't think having it, you know, be a blanket overall for tobacco and and vaping be part of that is probably sufficient. I've been struggling with this. Um, believe it or not, Marshall, I read this uh over the weekend, and I've been struggling about how to like even word some of this, but um, and maybe it is um pulling in a new policy specifically for vaping because my understanding is that it it can be other substances. I I don't know. I'm not versed in this in this area, but um I do think uh we might want to think about that a little bit more in the second reading.
Uh, Zeffy, why don't we do this? Why don't um you and I have a conversation, maybe a day or two, and you share the exact places where your where your thoughts are in those policies? And and maybe I can either research it or give it to our attorney or PSBA and we can get the right language and make uh make it more clear.
Yeah, uh, that that would be great. I I could follow up with you. Thank you.
So um just to add add to our kind of uh response to Zeffy's comment, the way the way I read it and um the tobacco policy, uh, I guess, what is it, number?
Well, it's two of them. There's two twenty-three and there and then three twenty-three.
I was looking at three twenty-three. Um, I I noticed that so vaping of um and Juul were struck were struck, but I guess the remaining language I thought was an attempt to broaden the the definition. So rather than speaking about vaping or Juul in particular, it's essentially broadened to be any electronic device that delivers nicotine or another substance uh to a person inhaling from the device.
That is correct.
So in a sense, it it by although the word vaping is eliminated.
Correct.
And the trademark Juul is eliminated, the definition actually has been broadened for any substance, even maybe ones that haven't been invented yet.
Yes.
Um, that are intended to deliver nicotine or any substance to a person through inhaling. Yeah, so I mean, so I that's that's kind of the way I I interpreted it. Um, if that's uh, I guess, adds to the discussion.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Joe. Um, and thank you, Jim, for meeting Zeffy. All right, great. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just really quickly, the the uh public records has some pretty extensive addendum additions to the to the policy. And uh, Jim, I'm assuming that's from Pennsylvania School Boards Association or other legal entity? Do we know?
It's it's uh possibly initiated by the Pennsylvania School Board, but uh created by our solicitor.
Okay.
Thank you for comments or questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the racial equity oversight committee.
Thanks, Amy. Uh, we had a meeting of the RIOT Committee on November eighteen. I'm sorry, October fourteenth. Uh, we also have an upcoming listening session, November eighteenth at seven PM, which will be held in the Ambler Borough. So we invite all the public to come out and join us. Um, Dr. Dwan, do you want to give a brief uh explanation as to what we discussed in our last meeting?
Sure, no problem. Um, at the October fourth Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting, the topic focused on disciplinary responses. And Ms. Latour joined us to share out discipline data from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, as well as a look back at the past five years. And we reviewed um the steps that have been in place um to support the uh decrease in student behaviors. We reviewed the action plan that's on the website, as well as talked about ways that our school teams are engaged in reviewing the disciplinary data, uh making decisions to provide interventions to students who have significant behaviors, thinking about the um the connection to positive behavior intervention and supports where um expectations are being put in place consistently throughout the school to help ensure that students are aware of what the expectations are and that those expectations are being modeled by staff as well as being acknowledged and reinforced um to help uh promote the positive behaviors that we want to see, as well as the interventions that need to be in place to support the behaviors when they arise, um as they as they do arise, of course. Um, so we reviewed um those proactive and preventative measures as well as um took a look at the restorative practices that are in place and the um the procedure that's in place to continue to um train our staff throughout the district in supporting students with restorative practices as well. Overall, our goal is to, of course, mitigate the racial disparities that we see in our disciplinary data um as well as improve the behaviors of all students throughout the the district. Uh, the second item, as you mentioned, was um the November eighteenth Community Conversations, which is coming up. Information was sent to families via email, so we encourage you to check your email and um and sign up and join us for those conversations on November eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dwan. Yes, we hope to have as many out as possible, so all here tonight and anyone that's uh listening online, please come out and join us. The sessions are a lot more effective when we can actually talk in person and have dialogue versus what we do in the committee meetings, which is more pushing out information and hearing from the administration. So we invite everyone to come out. We hope to have a great attendance and uh look forward to people getting involved. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for that report. Any questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much. Um, on to our health, wellness, and safety. Um, that is now with us. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I can take that. Um, our um our team met on October twenty-first, I believe, um for the Health, Wellness, and Safety Committee meeting. Uh, we had a few topics on the agenda for that evening, and we were um joined by a couple of our administrators to share some insights. So the first topic was to review the Pennsylvania Youth Survey and um review the mental health resources that are available in the district um and the ways in which the district has been responsive to the student needs that um come up through that survey. The survey data are not um one's data that we post necessarily, but we internally use that information to identify positive trends as well as areas of concern uh that need to be addressed in the district. And so one topic, for example, that we just uh heard earlier this evening was vaping is something that we discussed um as well as the mental wellness and mental health needs of our of our students. And so Dr. Heim McCloskey joined and shared out information about the mental health resources and the ways that our district is being responsive to be proactive about uh vaping, for example, and some other behaviors that we saw, as well as responsive. So when we have students who have been found to be vaping, how we're responding to not just consequences, those are absolutely in place, but also how are we helping the students to make better choices, to understand what the impact is around vaping? Um, this topic in particular is one that we intend to come back to specifically uh throughout this year because we know that we want to improve what we're doing in terms of an education for students as well as parents and caregivers. So more to come on that. Um, the other topic from the evening uh was uh an update about our social, emotional, and learning, social, emotional learning efforts in the district. Uh, Ms. Latour joined us to share a review of the updates um regarding ourselves, district themes. So each month throughout the year, there's a theme, and that theme is uh echoed throughout all of our schools. For example, September's theme is belongingness. And so schools across the district um are working with students to help them to build a sense of belonging, but also intentionally support um peer-to-peer relationships around that theme as well. Um, the next item was focused on belongingness, more specifically with regard to how we utilize those belonging survey data, and then the outline of um upcoming survey administration dates this school year um as well as PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And so Ms. Latour walked through um what that survey data, time, the survey timeline would be this year, but also uh more broadly, the implementation of PBIS, um reviewing how our staff were trained last year, how they prepared for the launch this year for the first year of implementation, um as well as the ongoing efforts to support staff in the implementation of positive behavior interventions and supports. Um, she announced and referenced uh the fact that all of our schools received the No Place for Hate designation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which is wonderful to see. Um, and so she shared some other examples of 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 um experiences across the schools, like uh Stony Creek's um Say Hello Week and activities that were related to that. Um, and then the last item, Ms. Rollings joined us to share an update about the Wake Up and Learn um efforts this school year, which will continue um thinking about the the sleep study that's going to take place with the rollout of that survey that will be administered to students again this uh this school year. It was administered last school year. Um, and so she shared the timeline for that. And that concludes the report.
Really, thank you so much, Dr. Dwan. Um, back to your first topic of mental health. That is just something that is like so important. I know Zeffy's talked about on many occasions. Um, I'm just wondering, um, I know I talked to you before at Safe to Say, and making sure that we get the word out about, is that something like if someone knows that someone's having mental health issues and is perhaps suicidal? Is that a number that someone can call, or is that for other issues? Like, what are the proper, like, what should someone do?
If they know someone is in trouble and needs help.
Yeah.
Um, certainly Safe to Say is is a is a resource that can be used if they wish to use that resource. If there's imminent danger and concern, they should immediately go to an adult in our school. Um, we have, of course, our administrative team and teachers and staff, and everyone is willing to and able to support a student who is in need of support, or a student who knows of a student who is in need. So we would want that student to immediately touch base with an adult that's in our building, so that that student could get the care and attention that they need immediately. Um, we also have um dozens of staff members. I I lost kind of the number. I think we're up to sixty-plus staff members across the district who have been trained in mental health first aid. Um, and so throughout our buildings, so staff members have an indicator on their door or window um for students and staff to see that they have had that special training. There's a little koala on their door and their window, so that that continues to be in place. Um, so those are a couple of avenues. One of the things that came up during this meeting, um and um Ms. Carrie Anakis was there and referenced how plentiful the resources are and how much we can be maybe thinking about are we reaching everyone in terms of publicizing and advertising and revisiting and recommunicating? Information gets pushed out, but that's something we can consider throughout the year. Are we periodically reminding our community, reminding our students of the resources that are available and the ways in which they can get support that they need?
And and that's kind of what I'm wondering, is if students know like who to go to. Zaff's given one of my questions, do they know about the koala on the doors? Do they know about like Safe to Say for, you know, and what the purpose of Safe to Say is, and when to call it, or when to go to someone with a koala on the door? And I just want to make sure our students know about all the resources. And also the first responder, I know I think Zeffy actually went to like a first responder training. And I was wondering, actually, if we possibly, if we look at per like. And I was wondering, actually, if we possibly, if we look at, like, the different seminars for parents throughout the year, if that's something we can look into, is some sort of seminar for parents or family members? Like, just if you can recognize those signs, because sometimes, you know, someone that you know, and you don't even recognize those signs, and that could be something really valuable for our family members or our more senior students, to be able to have a training to be able to recognize those signs from their fellow students or your children. So if we could look into that, that'd be great.
Thank you, will do. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Dwan.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, thanks very much for that. Given the comment earlier, could we get kind of a refresher on the opt-out? If people want to opt out of surveys, how that process works?
Yeah, absolutely. When we have the timeline for administering a survey, with the communication about the survey administration dates, there is typically information for families to know how to opt out. Once they complete that information, hopefully, they're also communicating with their students that that's the plan. And then the teacher is aware that that's the plan for students to not participate in that, in that specific survey, whatever, whichever survey that might be. So that's our typical process right now. It is an opt-out and not an opt-in process.
Okay, and then public comments from the audience, though. Have any comments from the audience right now? You can peel out one of our blue forms to make a comment. Right, any other board comments? Any other board comments? Okay. Then we'll move on to our extracurricular.
Thank you, Amy. We have our first extracurricular committee meeting next week. So once that meeting takes place, I will have an update regarding extracurricular. Thank you.
Marshall. All right, and then the MCU reports are next week until November. There is no October meeting. So do you have a report for MCU?
Yeah, so Zephy and I attended last week. There was a great presentation on welding, which included one of our students. There was also a lot of discussion about, as has been discussed the last couple of meetings, how we remedy the wait lists. So are there expansion opportunities in the Career Center, or are there other options in the community to reduce the wait?
Zephy, can you add to that report?
No, those were the two highlights, but I do want to say that the welding presentation blew my mind. I thought it was so cool. And what I think was really, really fascinating to me is how these students can kind of get certified in a number of welding techniques, for lack of probably knowing the right language or terminology for it, and can, you know, walk in and get, you know, welding positions, you know, right out of high school that are earning, you know, $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 a year. I mean, like, they're offering these students really phenomenal opportunities. And the one with the Hicken student in welding was a woman, so a young lady. And that's really fascinating, because welding is predominantly a male kind of dominated space. So they are trying to promote, you know, more, more students to explore all options. So that was, that was really fun to watch, so, but nothing more bad.
Great, thank you so much for that report. I have a question. Thank you. PSBI. Deanna, are you on? I don't think so. All right, so let's get to PSBI. ERC, we did have a meeting recently, and that was to get our representatives to go over some ideas we have for this coming year's meeting. So we'll be sharing that information hopefully in the next couple of weeks about what our plans are for this coming year for the ERC. All right, second public commentary. All right. Again, we're in a position here, we allow maximum of speakers to be heard on the same topic. So the comments to three minutes in the interest of fairness and urge to treat all speakers equally. It's the fourth practice that engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will call for responses on our board docs. And we'll go back and forth between person and virtual, when approached to the podium, please say your name. How do you resident, the topic on which you're speaking? Carol, please, hello?
My name is Carol Benning, now from Ambler. Two weeks ago, my granddaughter was assaulted in the high school cafeteria, the lower cafeteria. She was actually sucker punched from behind. As this was going on, there was a video being taken. I'm sure most of yous have seen it. I haven't. I don't want to see it. It's disgusting. My family and I will not look at this video. When my daughter arrived at the high school, my granddaughter was in blood coming down her face. I want you all to put yourself in that place. Would you like to come to school, pick up your child that's all bloodied? How would you react to that? How would you react to that? We've got nothing, nothing for this, nothing. But her safety is at... She can't even go to school. She has to do virtual thing. This is disgrace. She shouldn't be in school right now, not virtually home. The only two people that did anything with this is Dr. Blair and Mr. Kelly. That's it. Nobody from the board has reached out to any of us. My daughter, my daughter can't even come because she's so distraught over this. We residents of this district all our lives. I went to school here, my husband, my children, my grandson, and now my granddaughter, which we were wishing would be able to graduate from Wissahickin. My grandson was here in 2018. Nothing's going like this. These policies that you have on here right now don't work. They don't work. Sit down and talk. Sit down and talk. In fact, that day that this incident happened, they were talked to, the two, my granddaughter and this other person. Everything's fine. An hour later, she punched him. Then the video is going on before she even punched her. So this was premeditated. So that's telling you something. I'm doing this not to advocate just for her. I'm advocating for all these children in this little issue. These policies do not work, and it's been like this for the last five years. The last five years it's been like this. It was never like this. There's always bullying. I knew that. I went to school. There was bullying, but this is violence. My granddaughter's face was all bloody. Her braces were in her mouth. It was disgusting. She's more, we're more upset than she is. We don't want her back in the school district. This is a disgrace, and it's been out there. People know. I just want this to not happen to another child, because it's going to. And next time, they're going to go out and an ambulance. Luckily, she didn't go in an ambulance. Her mother took her to the hospital. She had a CAT scan. This should not happen. My time is up, but I have a question for Dr. Dwan. What can you do to make these children feel safer, aside from these policies you have, which I would love to hear from you quickly after this meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. There are no hands raised online.
My name is Rebecca Bevich. I'm from Whitpain Township. Before I start, I just wanted to point out the irony of my standing here three weeks ago, speaking on behalf of World Languages. And today, we get to hear all about the learning excitement of Hispanic Heritage Month, but we're still sticking our middle school kids in front of a computer for Freckle. My kid was there for the better part of an hour today instead of learning German. You may recall that three weeks ago, I asked a number of these questions about Freckle. And I'm here tonight because the board's written public response to my questions was insufficient, ignorant, and worst of all, inaccurate. In its public response, the board referred to Freckle as a learning platform that adjusts lessons to fit each student's level in subjects like, excuse me, math and reading. This is false. Freckle is not a learning platform. Students do not learn anything from it. It does not have lessons. It does not teach anything. It is an online workbook of practice questions. Please stop misleading the parents and taxpayers by implying Freckle teaches our kids anything. The board chose not to answer many of the other questions I posed three weeks ago, so I want to remind them that it is fully within your scope to evaluate the middle school schedule at the request of taxpayers and parents. Show us the data. What data is being collected from Freckle and how is it being used? What does that data show about the effectiveness of Freckle? Is it effective? What benefits have we seen from it? And if the district isn't using the data, who is? How much of our kids' data that the district sign over to Freckle and its affiliated companies? Can this listener comment on the contracts the district entered into with Freckle? How much does Freckle cost? How much are we paying skilled teachers to act as monitors of a computer class without teaching anything to our kids? Why are longstanding teachers having to meet a quota of directed practice assignments in Freckle during designated instructional class time, instead of trusting those teachers to determine what's best for their students? Who is behind the quota and the forced use of Freckle in our classrooms during instructional time? And lastly, how can you just sit here while we ask these questions? Why won't you answer them, and what are you hiding? The board needs to stop ignoring public questions about Freckle. Either show us what due diligence we've done, or start doing your due diligence now. Show us the data, or admit that it's a complete waste of time and money, and put it out of its misery. Fix the middle school schedule and find an effective use of our children's educational time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Yes, we have one hand raised online.
Okay, and who's that?
That is Beth.
Okay, Beth, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Great, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Wood, Beth Wood, from Whitpain Township. I'd like to thank the board for responding to my questions from the last general board meeting about the middle school master schedule. I hope that you also saw the teacher response, which pointed out that none of the responses you gave were reflective of the reality at Wissahickin Middle School. This raises the question, who is giving you this information? Who is telling you that all is fine at the middle school? Who is telling you that special education students are getting the supports they need, that the teachers' concerns have not only been heard, but addressed? Please think critically about where your information is coming from. It is the teachers who make or break this district for our students on a day-to-day basis. They are the ones in the classrooms, the hallways, the cafeterias, not only teaching our students, but creating a supportive community. They deserve to feel supported by the administration and this board. I heard that the superintendent, an assistant superintendent, came to listen to the concerns of the middle school teachers, and then walked out, never to follow up with the teachers again. That is a huge failure of leadership. As you hear about the multiple concerns coming to you from parents, realize that much of this is coming to you because the administration is refusing to respect the concerns brought to them. And then you, in your elected role, that you volunteered your time to work in, you are dealing with the problems that come from that. In your role as school board members, I realize you work closely with administration. You have meetings together. You have inside jokes. You have bonded. But take a step back. When people come to you angry that no search has taken place for a new superintendent, upset about bullying, worried about the middle school, this is what they see. They see a school board that is buddy-buddy, for lack of a better term, with administration. A school board that is not asking the tougher questions about the concerns that are being raised. It looks like the school board is electing a friend who won't make any difference in what we currently are living with. I really hope that is untrue. Maybe, maybe Dr. Dwan will be great, and maybe you know that she disagrees with certain decisions that have been made and will take things in a different direction. I hope that is the case. I truly do. I'll close with a reminder that almost 100% of the middle school staff rang an alarm bell about the schedule and how it was harming their ability to do their job, not only to teach students, but also to create a strong community for an age group that so desperately needs it. Administration responded by disrespecting them. We gave our power to you. We don't have any power. You have it. Please do not respect. We're asking you to take action. Thank you.
This is Ambler Row. So mad that I have to waste a few seconds, but you guys missed the point completely. The problem is that the search was done in secret. We're not a hiring committee. We know we're not a hiring committee. We're not asking to interview the candidates. We're not asking to play HR here. You missed the point completely. We're asking you to tell us why. And Mr. Saltanic was here. I was here too. I filled out the survey absolutely positively. Did a community survey, and there was lots of community input when Dr. Chrisfield was hired here and he replaced Judy Clark. That's fact. The concern for me is that this is a pattern of just how we're going to continue on, and I don't want a successor plan here. I believe in this district. I believe that we're one of the best, and I believe that we can attract the best talent. We've got to open the door, and we've got to ask for it. The middle school, in the time that I have left, most critical issue, the middle school. I'm at a loss, and I agree with the previous speaker, how in the world, and who are you listening to? And how does their water or their voice hold more water than 100% of the people that are in the building, boots on the ground, looking at our students day in and day out? These are not whiny school, these are not whiny middle school teachers who are mad because they don't have enough time to lunch together. That is not what's going on here. They, I've talked to them. You have, we've looked them in the eye. We've seen the pain in their face. They have laid this out meticulously for you. This is not good for our students. That was so highly insulting. There's nothing good about this schedule. Why you think taking a bell away is going to get kids to class on time in sixth grade is wild to me? But you've got to fix it. You can't just ignore it. You're taking your heels in, and you're listening to people who do not step foot in the building, who do not have clues on what is going on in these schools. You have not provided any of the information that you said that you gathered as to the decimation of the World Language Program. All these other districts that don't have it, we all heard you wrong. They all do have it. We're going backwards, not forwards. I want to go back to the west that we were, the back, back to the west that my list graduated from. That one that was really, really good that we heard about before all this mess five years ago. You lied. You outright lied in your response. The teachers responded back, and I would greatly appreciate the board taking your time to respond to the teachers and apologize. Yes, we have Christine.
Hi, Christine. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Oh, thank you. This is Christine English. I'm in Whitpain Township. I'm calling because I need some assistance, and I'm not sure how to get it. I've been told that the assistant principal is going to research this for me, but I have a child with IEP who is in an AP class, and I was told that IEPs do not apply to AP courses. This is really confusing to me, and I've asked a teacher, teachers, the student services director, now the assistant superintendent, the assistant principal, the case manager, and the guidance counselor, and everyone told me the IEP does not apply to AP courses. And everyone told me the IEP does not apply to AP courses. How are we going to have students with IEPs able to access the same courses the other students can? If they have the ability, but they just need a support for their disability. There's college board accommodations, but there's not actual ability to use your IEP. That that does not make sense. I've asked for clarification. I reached out to a lawyer. They told me it does apply, that they don't understand what's going on. Why should I have to pay a thousand dollar retainer to simply have you all show me a policy to say that in fact, the information's incorrect and IEP does not apply to an AP course? I have two children who are extremely bright. They just happen to have disabilities and need that support. It's very upsetting to me that I was told this last year, so I made my child not take more than one AP course, even though he was recommended for others, because I was told the IEP can't be used. But now I'm being told, yes, it can. So I want to know what are the policies, and I need someone to answer me this week, not next year. This has been going on now for over a year. The assistant superintendent told me that I need to be patient. They told me last week that they would research this. Why would administrative level, high-level people in charge of our special education departments not be able to just say to me, yes or no, and if no, here is the policy? I don't understand. How can you not just know? If your students with IEPs are being supported by their IEP in a high school course, it may be college level, but it is given in the actual school district, which should be covered under IDEA. So I I don't understand. So if someone could please help me out with this and get an answer to me this week, so I do not have to once again spend a thousand dollars, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Say yourself.
Hello, say you just got off Whitpain Township. My concerns today are regarding, um, after hearing that mother, grandmother, talk about her daughter, um, her granddaughter, that was really what it's saying. And my concerns also are about bullying. Um, as you all know, uh, last year, um, my son was plopped by a student from behind. He didn't see it coming. He was playing on the field and soccer field, and that same student did that to like four children on that very same field. They just had all out attack. My son suffered a concussion due to it, and I got no support from this district, none. Um, and that was really, really disheartening uh for me and for my son. On going, it was more bullying done. However, this year it's been stopped. Um, but there is bullying going on in the middle school, not personally with my son, but there's just larger kids. They're like hitting children in the locker rooms. You guys, there's not enough eyes in the locker rooms. There is not enough um eyes in the gym. I've been told by extracurricular teachers that they don't have the support for like tech ed or health, those type of classes. Uh, they're just, they don't have the support, especially for the children who have IEPs. They feel like they're overwhelmed because those particular children may have different needs than the typical children, and the teachers are just overwhelmed. Um, I also wanted to know, what is the policy and procedure for removing, removing slash terminating a lunch aid? Um, I was called in this last week to help a fellow person out here uh for substituting. I actually didn't even know that I was on the list as a substitute for this year. And then I was told after the second day that I wasn't allowed to come back because um the board member, the board members didn't approve me for this year when I was there for two days during the week. So I didn't understand that, and I believe that that's why I wanted to hold that sign up today of undemocratic, because the superintendent here is absolutely a tyrant. And I believe that if I was not chosen to be a substitute for the school, which I just wanted to do that to just be around my son sometimes in the school, if that was the case, it was a direct retaliation because I too had to call a lawyer for his actions last year. So this district is not being transparent. There is very much so being tyranny being done here. And I for one am happy, very happy to see him go. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to talk about uh what do you guys have in place for the disparity, racial disparities in discipline? I did hear Dr. Dewan speak about that, but I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Yes, we have Carrie. Carrie, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Carrie Ferrero, uh, Lower Gwinnett. Um, I was calling about the schedule, the middle school schedule. Your comments last week, um, or last the answers to the questions uh through the last meeting, you said the middle school leadership team has made adjustments to schedule that address many, if not all, of the concerns addressed by the middle school teachers. And I don't understand how you could state that when you know very clearly that that is not the case. The teachers have made it clear it's not the case. Um, you seem to be listening to the administration and totally ignoring an entire school of teachers. Along with, I know multiple parents have reached out to you. I personally saw the impact um from seventh grade to when this new schedule was implemented, when my daughter was in eighth grade. Uh, the level of support she received was drastically reduced. She has a 504. She misses a lot of class for multiple specialists. She's complex medically. Uh, when she missed class, she'd have to, it'd be weeks before she could get enough time with all of the teachers to make up the classes. She'd have tests three weeks after the class had the test. If she missed it for a, you know, an appointment or was sick, the uh class has already moved on and had another exam, another test, and here she is making up the task, the test from the last unit. Fortunately, she's advanced, so it's not an issue for her, but if she, you know, if it's a kid with an IEP rather than just a five or four, it, they're going to struggle. They're going to fall farther behind. The teachers just don't have the time to support them. It's impacting the students. It's impacting the teachers. We're going to lose the teachers. And I'm so disappointed by the response or the lack of response. It is one hundred percent your duty to ensure that the administration follows through and supports the teachers and students. And I don't understand where you're just going with the flow and saying, yeah, we're going to believe the administration and totally ignore all of the teachers and the parents telling you, no, this isn't right. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Um, I think I got all of them. Did I pick one to turn in? Okay, but no one else is online, right? Okay. Public commentary period. Uh, then on the board comments. Nope. All right, um, then on to German. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.